To the March tenth, two thousand and fourteenth work session. Work sessions are more informal setting to update the council on business items. No vote will be taken on work session items. Tonight, there are three items on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. Do we have any public comment?
We do not, sir.
I knew that sometime. Then let the city clerk call the first item.
Our first item this evening is discussion of impact fee categories presented by Ms. Kathy Field.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. When we last had our discussion about impact fees, you directed staff to move forward, and we have been subsequently developing an RFP to go out for services for impact fees. It's been recommended to us, however, that as part of this RFP, if we could get some direction from the city council in terms of which public facility categories they would like to have considered for impact fees, simply because the fact is, as part of the services, I'm going to have to request that level of service for each category be established, and then subsequent to that, capital improvements to implement those levels of service will have to be enumerated. So I have before you a list of all categories that are covered under the impact fee law. The ones in red, however, are the ones that are under the purview of the county. So essentially, the ones in black print are the ones that a city is eligible to fund under the impact fee program. So I'm looking for some guidance. Either we could go out and request that the consultant that's chosen develop level of services for all of these five categories, or if there's some you'd like to cross off the list. I'm looking for some direction from you in terms of how you would like me to approach the services for the consultant for the impact fees.
You know, I would just throw out that, you know, the two things that stick out for me, you know, based on looking at impact fees versus more development would be roads, streets, and bridges, and also parks, open space, and recreation. Granted, all the other items need, you know, funding too, but as far as the direct things you think of as you, you know, when someone builds a neighborhood or whatever, facility, those are the first things I think that jump out. Bill?
The fourth one down there, stormwater and flood control facilities. What's our exposure, and I guess Carter can address it, to flooding? I know we've got a number of dams in the city that need repair or maintenance, and wondering how they stack up on your list of priorities as far as dams and flood control.
Most of the ones that need work actually aren't on our list. They're typically owned by the Stormwater or the Soil Water Conservation District, and so right now, it's under their purview and responsibility to make repairs to those. I think, looking at the list, if I were to choose, the roads, streets, and bridges probably have a bigger impact on our capital and operational budget than the others. And from what we've seen so far over the last four or five years, we probably have a better ability to handle the stormwater under our operational and capital budget than roads, streets, and bridges. So if I were to choose, I would take roads, streets, and bridges as the priority of those.
Thank you.
But I'll take money wherever I can get it.
I mean, I would think we could all agree very easily that parks, open space, and recreation is a no-brainer. And to me, the other question is, is there something else we want to add to it? And I agree, if we're going to add something else to it, it would be roads, streets, and bridges, though I believe we need to... I don't want the adding of roads, streets, and bridges to come across as being pro-development, but just trying to... Because there are some who believe if you fix your roads, streets, and bridges, you're going to end up with more development, and by fixing the roads, streets, and bridges, you're enabling development. So I think we'd have to be careful that it was... That that was not the reason that this was being done, but just to fix the current problems that we already have. But I think parks, open space, and recreation is, to me, is a no-brainer. That's the reason to do it.
Good question. Kathy, is there... I mean, from a flexibility perspective, is there any disadvantage to us actually just not selecting all of these as for us being able to choose one when the time arises, or we have to equally allocate the monies?
No, you don't have to equally out... That's a very good point. You don't have to equally allocate the monies. What we would do is, we would establish a level of service for all of these, and then we would come up with a capital improvement program that would be separate from the city's capital improvement program, but relate to the level of services that we've established for each of these categories. And you, of course, would have the opportunity to review that. And it may mean that there's just, you know, two things in one category and five things in another category. We'll prioritize in terms of what capital improvements you would want to carry out the level of services. Obviously, you know, you don't have an ordered amount of money, so that prioritization is certainly allowed. So you could keep maximum flexibility. We would just have to identify level of service for all of them, and then we would then establish what capital improvements we would want.
So like, a level of service for, you know, one could be zero while we're focusing on the other at any given time?
It would be there, but it would mean that you would prioritize less of that category as opposed to the other category.
And that being the case, I mean, then is there... Obviously, we, you know, like Aaron said, parts in open space, rec, and road streets and bridges are my two top ones. Obviously, law enforcement, fire emergency, you know, I don't... If we can find a way to help them too, I wouldn't want to not do it.
Well, I think that's a public relations type thing. There are a lot of people who really, really dislike impact fees, and I think that, you know, it's easier to swallow impact fees if what they're going for is parks, open space, and recreation. That is, is to swallow them if it's going for a lot of these other things. And that was my feeling, is it's just, you know... Not that we don't need the other things, but we're slowly taking care of the other ones. But I'm thinking, you know, what does our public really want, and it's the parks, open space, and recreation, and the road streets and bridges fixed?
Is this something too where if we were to do this and just, you know, once we have it done, we could add a service or take it away down the road as well? I mean, how does that...
But then you have to go back and do an analysis. And again, it's the idea that what is the current level of service? And then for the new people coming in, you want to replicate that level of service and, you know, extract a fee, in a sense, for those people coming in to pay. So you've got so many acres of park, for instance, for a certain amount of population. Well, then, that's what you want to base your fee on. So it's all intertwined, and that analysis is what the consultant will be doing for us. And anytime you want to go back and relook at it, it's a new analysis that happens in terms of level of service.
Exactly. Well, as far as level of service goes in that particular point, if you're talking about bridges, I'm not sure you evaluate bridges with the level of service analysis. I think from our experience here in the city and having done a survey of bridges, it's a matter of safety rather than a matter of level of service. So if we were to come up with a list of bridge replacements or repairs, kind of addressing what Matt brought up here, as soon as you took care of all of those deficiencies as far as bridges go, would they drop off the list, and would you add something else to replace them?
Absolutely. Just like any capital improvement program, once you've completed one, that drops off the list, and you update it every so many years, and so that's when you would add as well.
How often is this reviewed, then? The whole process?
I believe it's every five years you need to look at it.
But is there a difference in the cost if he only looked at one or two categories compared to if he has to look at all four categories?
Yes, that's the issue. It's more work. And it doesn't mean we can't do it. It's just that the point was made to me that if there were some that you definitely didn't want to do, then there was no reason to pay for it. But the option is certainly yours to make.
And what is the difference of that cost?
Oh, I have no idea. Sorry to say.
Well, so what are you looking for this evening? Is to say, we want to look at those four, or three, or two, or rate those four from one, two, three, four?
I just want to know if you'd like them all to remain on the list for us to do the full analysis for the level of service and come up with some capital projects for these five and to treat them all equally? Or is there one that you're just not interested in, and you want it to come off the list, and I don't need to deal with it, or not? I mean, it's...
In my opinion, I think we ought to... If we're going to try to pare it down, is to pare out the stormwater and flood control and keep the roads, parks, and law enforcement.
Yeah. Joe?
Yeah. It's I'm putting some of the pieces together that got us to this point. And the way I remember things happening is, we had some... We had a couple of data points. One data point was the survey that we sent out to our residents a couple of years back focused on parks, open space, and recreation as being focus points for us to develop more. And that's probably one of the few things that is in scarce supply in the city. So... And then the other data point was our retreat earlier in the year where we started talking about how were we going to fund some of these things, and the idea of impact fees came up. That got followed up with a presentation a couple of meetings back. So I may be reading that all wrong, but I certainly think that parks, open space, and recreation is the priority. And while I wouldn't be against including some of these other things, I think that those things are already being managed by our budget in a manner that I think is acceptable. Certainly, changes to that based on, you know, how the city grows and stuff in the future should be able to address that. So I'm just thinking that we could keep parks on there all by itself, but I'd be willing to go and include some of those other items.
If I can interject, counsel, I know you're kind of debating back and forth on which ones may or may not be on that list. There's absolutely nothing wrong with picking one and saying, let's get one in place and let's work from there. That, in some circumstances, is even recommended. So if... I am hearing a consistent theme amongst the council, and I think you're probably hearing it too, that if you were to ask, be asked, which is number one on the list? It's parks and open space and recreation. If you want to stop there at this point and let's explore that, get that one on the books and in place, that doesn't preclude us from doing any of these others later. So I just want... If you want to get comfortable with just saying one, that's okay. And that, to some degree, is actually, according to some, preferred, so.
Bill? Rick?
I'd agree with parks, open space, and recreation as a primary one. However, I lobby strongly for roads, streets, and bridges. We're talking about impact, and it's the impact of development. The greatest impact that development creates is on your roads, streets, and bridges. And I think we ought to make provision for that item, and I'd like to see it included as one of the two items that we're talking about.
Okay, Rick?
Yeah, I guess to bridge off from what Bill was saying, that's kind of my thought process too. If these are impact fees, as people come in and we're developing, they're supposed to go to offset the impact of development. And those two, I think, are the two key things that I think of. I think law enforcement, fire, emergency, those are all good, but we're handling that with our operating budget more so. But those other two, I think, are major impacts when we develop. So that would be my input.
I'm fine with those two.
Wow. Do we come back to the ones I said first?
Well, that's why we did it.
Do we have a consensus?
All right. But that being said, did we come to a consensus to leave all four of them on there, but prioritize those two, or narrow it down to those two?
I prefer to narrow it down to those two and not pay a consultant for the cost of the other two.
Okay, Carter, you're good with that.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Sounds like you've got some direction there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy.
It'll save the city some money.
All right. Well, city clerk, please call the next item.
Your next item is discussion of parcel acreage change analysis. This is being presented by Michelle McIntosh Ross.
And may I just say something first? Michelle may look a little tired because she drove back from Washington, D.C. last night.
Oh, boy.
And because her son... Well, then you'll have to explain it, but he got third place in a track and field competition.
Yes, the National Indoor Track and Field Championships in Washington, D.C., 55 meter.
Good deal.
How old is he?
He's nine. He ran in the nine-ten age group.
Wide receiver material.
Well, he likes to throw, so I don't know. He'll be a running quarterback.
He's pretty.
Okay. Chris, did you want to...
Yeah, I'll go ahead and just kind of frame what we're going to talk about here, counsel, and then I'll turn it over to Michelle. We've got a couple of different things for you tonight. We titled it parcel acreage analysis, and that's where we're likely to start. Along with the parcel acreage analysis, we'll move into some of the different tools we have been using and some of the tools we anticipate using moving forward to do this crazy thing that we keep talking, calling preservation of green space. It can take on many different faces. But I kind of wanted to give you an idea of where we've been over time, where we were in 2000, where we were in 2010, and where we are today in 2013 on land types in Milton, and then talk a little bit about some of the different green tools we have at our disposal now, and then some that we're looking at in the future. So that's kind of the high level of where this discussion will go. And we'll talk about data here in a minute. And when we start to talk about data, I'll need to tell you about how this... How and where this data comes from and exactly how reliable it is. But when we get to that, I'll take those questions. But at this point, I'll turn it over to Michelle.
Okay. Can I... And wait one statement too. I did reach out some of the Preserve of Milton members to make sure they knew this meeting. So I don't see anybody here, but wanted to try to get the word out so that, you know, we can definitely promote the...
They may be watching on this online, too.
I'm sure they are. But, you know, to promote, trying to get as many citizens out here to see what we are doing. So just move forward.
So what you're looking at right now is some data that we found, some archived data for 2000. This is what Fulton County did back when they were doing their planning. As you notice, the title is the Northwest Fulton. So it's the general area of Milton, but as you can see, it's not the exact boundary of Milton. But that was the map from 2000, and it shows parcels. If you look at the key on the left, parcel sizes between zero and five, five to 10, 10 to 20, et cetera. And then it shows the number of parcels in each of those categories, as well as the acreages and percentages. And so I did a pie chart on the right, and you could take a look at that. So of course, the biggest pie was 33 percent of the acreage was in the zero-to-five acre lots. And then in the five-to-10 lot sizes, we had about 15 percent. And then 17 percent of Milton was the 10-acre to 20-acre lots, et cetera. So I'll let you take that in a little bit.
The ones you'll want to look at, counsel, is as you move forward, is pay special attention to the orange and then that light blue. Those are the largest of the tracks, and you'll see what those do over time as compared to the others.
Okay. So that was the map we found. So I asked GIS to update it 10 years into the future. Well, you know, so now it's 10 years later from that time. So 2010, the tax digest, we used that data set to produce this map. And as you can see, and I'll have all these pie charts together in a minute, but that orange, like Chris said, decreased a lot, went down to 3 percent. That's the 60-plus acres. And the number of parcels or the acres in parcels between zero and five acre lots increased. So you could see some changes there. As we move on, we had some 2013 data that is similar to the 2010. Of course, not a lot of years passed between those two, but we do see a little bit of Not too much... In fact, the percentage stays the same with the zero-to-five acre parcels, but then we have some changes in the five-to-10 acre and so on.
Let me interject, Michelle. This is where I need to talk about where this data originates from. This is data that comes from the tax digest, and it comes from Fulton County. It's as reliable as Fulton County's information is. If you go back a slide, if you can do that for me, just so we can go back to 2010, you'll see that in 2010, and then go forward to 2013, you'll see that it says that we have a different acreage in the city of Milton. Well, I know that not to be the case because the city hasn't grown or shrunk in three years, where the number of parcels certainly could have changed, but the number of acreage really should stay consistent. You know, this is as good as the input to get to an output. Now, there's a couple of things that we can look at between 2010 and 2013 that are easy to highlight on the map, and that's the three Fulton County Board of Education properties finally were added in 2013 as being over 60 acres. Cambridge High School, the schools where Milton Northwestern are, as well as the land that they have owned it on Freemanville Road. So if you say, how did we go from 11 parcels in 2011, or 2010 being over 60 acres to 13? It actually was an increase of four on one map and a decrease of two on another for a net increase of two. So, you know, it's... If we wanted to get into the level of detail and scrub this data to where we were saying that we were spot on with every last acre and every last percentage, I can't get there for y'all. And, you know, there's just some gaps in the data. If you go back two screens now, you'll see that... Well, it's hard to see unless you know what you're looking at. Go back, go forward. If you look on that map to what would be today Cambridge High School, you see it over there across from North Park. It's easy to highlight because North Park's in yellow. You can see the information from Cambridge High School just hasn't been entered into the data. It doesn't even exist as a data point, which is why it shows as though it's not even in Milton. So, you know, there's those nuances to it. The thing we're looking at, though, is what's the higher-level trend? When you look on a percentage basis for about 1.2, 1.3 percentage points off in the data aligning, and yes, that would be material, but for the purposes of this discussion, I don't know that it necessarily changes the picture any. And what we're seeing is that some of the larger pieces of land are being developed into smaller pieces of land, and the total number of large land area parcels is, although not necessarily gone, is decreasing. This kind of shows it probably the best when you look at those, and you can kind of get a sense of what each one has done in the time period. So you're going to ask and say, well, Chris, why in 2000 did we have a smaller amount of 20 to 40-acre parcels than we do in 2010? And once we peeled that onion back, what we figured out is that any apartment complex that chose to go condominium, for example, we have the Villages of Devonshire right up the way here. What they did is they kept the same parcel size, which was in the 20 to 40-acre range, and every unit on the site was layered one on top of each other. So if there's 400 units in the... There's 250 units in the Villages of Devonshire. That, just according to this data, became 250 20 to 40-acre parcels because each one was laid on top of each other rather than separated to be a portion of a 20 to 40-acre site. So we could have told the system to ignore those types of parcels, and... But that didn't seem to be the right thing either. So we kind of just wanted to have an explanation that you're getting... Why purple gets bigger as you go to 2010 made no sense to me. It shouldn't make any sense to you, but that's the reason why it did.
If you extrapolate the data on the large properties, we've got two, you said, the net two were the schools. How many of those are other schools versus raw property?
Okay, if you go back a couple of slides for me, please. Okay, so let me focus you in on this one. If you look up north of Birmingham Road, you will see that there is a development, I think it's Kingsley Estates, that fronts both Freemanville and Birmingham Road. You can see that dark blue, kind of middle of the screen, north of Birmingham Road. If you go forward one slide to 2013, you'll see that the top two of those, when they were developed into residential neighborhoods, they went away. So there was a loss of two. Okay? Go back for me again. The other ones that you'll see is there is... On this, in 2010, there's not the three school sites. If you can put in your head where Cambridge is, put where Milton High School is, and then put Freemanville Road, where the land is that they own that's raw at this point. If you go forward to 2013, you see that those three populate, Cambridge and Milton High School Northwestern, as well as the other site. And then if you go back one for me, and I don't have my... Go forward to 2013 for me one more time. It lights up right there in that Freemanville area, and I'm not exactly sure what the development is, but it was plus four essentially on one. Plus four on the 2013, it was three schools and one parcel that wasn't a school. And then you lose two on the 2010, which became Kingsley Estates. That's what gives you the net positive of 11 to 13.
Okay. So when we look at this, the schools still could show 60-plus acres, but they're really not potential development going forward. They just fall in that data category.
That's correct. That's correct. It still is consolidated as a tract of land that is larger than 60 acres. We've got a slide that's going to show what of the acreage in Milton, what falls within the equestrian, estate residential, and forested or undeveloped. We're going to have a visual for that, so you can kind of get that picture in your head of, you know, what still exists out there that is in that bucket of preserving the character.
Right.
So we'll get to that in just a second.
Yeah. And before we move on, just to expand, this is just parcel acres. These are golf courses, and that's the landfill. So it doesn't necessarily mean what is there to develop is just what are large acres. So if you sort of eyeball, this is Crooked Creek Golf Course right there. That's White Columns. That's our park, and that's another subdivision. I forget its name. But that's just whatever are large acres.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay? All right. Okay. So this is the map Chris was talking about. What we have here is the map. It shows in the green, I tried to make the colors link up, the green, forested areas, agricultural areas, equestrian areas, and estate residential. And the light green are the golf courses and private recreation. This is the school. And then the dark green, you'll see are public parks. Now, we went ahead and put the landfill as dark green because potentially that will become a public space in the future, so we went ahead and counted that as public. And so that's what we have. And then the light tan color is all other areas.
And, Michelle, what would, when you say estate residential, is that one per acre or greater?
It can be. I'll tell you how we arrived at this. We took everything that was large acres, anything that was sort of an equestrian farm, anything that was forested or looked undeveloped. Estate residential, not necessarily inside a subdivision or, you know, just along the way, that went ahead and became this one group. And then we took everything else out, and then we highlighted the parks, the golf courses, and, well, both the golf courses and our public parks, so that we have an idea of what is out there that can be preserved in, you know, TDRs maybe, anything else, acquisitions, whatnot. So that represents land that is not already spoken for in terms of some sort of covenants or what have you.
So the one map shows us individual, per the tax digest, that fit those different categories. This kind of bolts it to say, if you wanted to compile, you've got these blocks of property that would fall into that category. Is that the correct way to look at it?
Yeah, to some degree. And I struggled with this map a little bit as well as to what story it was actually telling. And I think the story that this one tells is that these are the three types of land area, that when you put them, either what comes out of our comprehensive plan or what you try to match, what I think we're taking from the council and the direction you all are taking from the citizens, when you put those three together, they essentially and largely are that land which, to... largely are that land which, to be preserved, if it could be preserved, would keep this thing that we keep calling character or feel of Milton, that if it, everything that today exists is forested or undeveloped, what exists today is agricultural, equestrian, or what exists is estate residential, that those are the three things when lumped together create these bucolic views that we have in Milton. There's probably some other things that add to Milton, as a matter of fact, I know there are. So to think that this is all inclusive, that would be to say, okay, everything that's green there, we need to make sure that nothing happens to it, and life is great, you know, that would be pie in the sky and probably not practical nor possible. But it was neat to get at least a snapshot view of, you know, what exactly exists out there in those three categories that I think create this, this climate that we like. Partner that with the recreation and golf courses that largely aren't going to be built upon because they are, exist where they are, and then the parkland, and you put all that together, and how much of Milton at this point still remains in a state of character that we like. So I think the thing that, the punchline, for lack of a better term, is that it doesn't look as though all is lost at this point, that there is still more of what makes Milton special than there is of, I don't want to say what doesn't make Milton special, but the essential part of Milton, and then the horse farms, so it's a difficult story to tell without deciding that, hey, we don't need neighborhoods, because we do. I mean, we need neighborhoods to be viable, successful community. So, you know, are the neighborhoods, traditional neighborhoods, in that buff-colored area? And is our commercial district in the buff-colored area? Yes. To suggest that that's bad, though, is inappropriate, because we need those to be able to drive the green areas that are, that are green. You don't have one without the other, I would argue. So if there's a story to be told out of this slide, I think that's it, is that all is not lost, time is of the essence, and, you know, we just need to start working with tools that you're about to hear here in just a second. Need to start working with our tools to keep this character intact.
Great. And this, this, this map is current, this takes out any zoned subdivisions that we're looking at, or are they still, some of those still blocks still in that green?
Councilmember, I'm glad you brought that up, because that was a point that Kathy wanted me to highlight, and I totally forgot. This would be worst-case scenario. This is, this takes out everything that's currently in some part of the process. So, yes, this, if any of those things don't get adopted, or choose to withdraw, or any of those neighborhoods that are in the current mix, that highlights back up as green if, if the direction changes.
That's helpful, thanks.
Couple of years ago, we had done a study on the quantity or the acreage of streams and buffers. Is that factored in at 47%?
This was on a parcel-by-parcel basis, so I would, I would say no.
Yeah, so we have...
Well, that's got to be a fairly significant quantity out there, too, just to support the fact that there's some perpetual green space out there that will never be developed.
Correct, yes. And, and we were just discussing amongst ourselves that the map doesn't show all of the parcels that are majority undeveloped. They have a house, but then the next three acres are forested or in floodplain or what have you, but this map looks at the parcel as a whole. So...
Right.
Yep. Okay, moving on, all right. Okay, so we have some tools that we use and that we're working on. As you know, the 2030 Comprehensive Plan defines all of our future development sites on the map, Crab Apple, Highway Nine, Birmingham. And we all, all of those areas have a plan already, or a plan is on the way. Deerfield, Crab Apple, Birmingham, and then we have Arnold Mill and Highway Nine North that we're working on right now. So everything that we proposed that would be a development site in Milton is being master planned, so we're using that as a tool, and that would direct development to those sites so that it will preserve the rest of Milton, okay?
Any questions about that?
Okay. We have a Parks and Recreation Master Plan, an amended Trail Plan within that. I just mentioned, we have those two studies on the way, Arnold Mill and Highway Nine.
That's forward.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. So we have the two planning studies on the way, and we also are working on that Green Space Preservation Playbook with some folks who came in from ICMA, so we should be getting a report on that soon.
Quick question. Is that the same, is that the same as a green print? I know that's been talked about before, it's not white.
No, it, it's not going to amount to what, if we're using the title of a green print as, as an example of what the Trust for Public Land does for $100,000, it is not that.
Is the prioritization of those parcels that we want to try to preserve, right?
And a way, and different ways that you can preserve?
That's right.
Different tools in our toolbox to preserve the land.
Yeah, and, you know, we'll talk about a green print here before we're done. I'm more than happy to write a scope of work and go to the market for somebody to do a green print or an open space plan. We can't just award that to the Trust for Public Land at the dollar figure. I mean, I could talk about Trust for Public Land all day long, and as long as they're above $100,000, as long as they're above $30,000, they don't get the business until they respond to our bid. And they candidly told me on the phone that we're good planners, we're not good bidders, so we don't bid on work. So, you know, if, if you're going to be in the six figures and not bid on work, I can't hire you. So we'll have to write a scope of work and go to the market for essentially something comparable if we choose to do that, if we think that that's a priority for, for Milton. I think that's probably more of a longer, these are, the things we're looking at in these green tools are more short-term, right-now things. You know, they're things that we can affect immediately through our regulatory authority, through our zoning. You know, we can look at long-term type stuff, but I think we need to be real confident that our short-term stuff is handled before we start to really look long-term.
Just make sure we're talking about the same thing, sorry.
Yeah.
I think I sent you an email. What do we have to make sure that people don't clear-cut property under the disguise of farming, and then once they've got things clear-cut and have planted a row of butter beans, then a year later, they decide they're going to do something else with the property?
The regulatory thing that would control that is the zoning code, is the allowed uses in agricultural zoning. And does it become splitting hairs as to what, what is, what is timber harvesting versus clear-cutting? What is farming versus not farming? You know, are there some, is there some gray area there? I think in our years we've seen that.
I think we need to tighten up that gray area, because I think that gray area allows for way too much of clear-cutting and then developing it for something else a year or two later. So I think that, I think that's one area that needs to be tightened up.
And I may not be correct, but I believe in AG1 property, agricultural property, can clear-cut.
They can clear-cut. But what I, what I, you know, and they don't have to recompense if it's for farming, but if it's for other things, they would have to recompense. And my fear is they go and clear-cut, say they're farming, and then a year or two later, they build whatever they want to on the property. So I believe that, you know, in order for the recompense not to apply, then it's got to, it's got to be actively farmed for a certain period of time.
Council support us looking into that, bringing something back?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. All right, ready? Okay, so moving on with the tools. As you know, we implemented the transfer of development rights back in 2012. We're currently revising the Northwest Fulton Overly District to include the rural view sheds along the main roads, starting to require that, as well as maximum impervious lot coverage for AG1 to 20% for single-family lots. We are in a moratorium right now, as you know, for the zoning districts of CUP, NUP, TR, R1, R2, and R2A. Some of the questions we're asking are, and this is for you, do we delete the CUP and the NUP? Do we include the new rural residential district? And do we write and present a conservation subdivision ordinance? So these are some of the items that we are working on and could be working on during the moratorium question.
And we're going to bring some recommendations on these topics. I think I heard her say that we were looking for some feedback on these at this point. We're, we're working through these as your professional staff, and we're going to bring some recommendations forward as to what we think these different classifications should look like in the future to, to protect the, the character. And some of those questions that we are asking ourself is, do these things even need to exist? Should they exist in a different format, et cetera, et cetera?
Can you clarify, what is a, I'm familiar with conservation subdivision, what's a rural?
Well, we're working on the zoning classification that might be unlike something we have at this point, that more closely crafts what we, more closely crafts what we want. What we're taking is the sense of what the council wants at this point. So, you know, we might say, does the community unit plan or the neighborhood unit plan, does it need to go away? And in its place, could we put something in that more closely aligns with the council's desires that would be in developing something that had protected views and different, different setbacks and buffers and all that good stuff? But something to replace it with that is more in keeping with what you're...
Maybe a little more definition than just the CUP or whatever, which is just density and...
Right. Yeah, something that's more specific to Milton. Yeah, sort of recognize it better. Okay, so more green tools. As usual, we're enforcing the tree preservation ordinance, and we have a good tree preservation ordinance. We're also Tree City USA. We've been, had that designation for four years. We expanded Bell Memorial Park, and in 2013, we were certified a wildlife habitat community by the National Wildlife Federation. So these are some of the things that we have in place. For the intense development areas, as you know, Crab Apple and Deerfield, we have put in Form Base Code, which is some additional architectural and site development guidelines so that those developed areas still have Milton's character. So whether it's developed or not developed, or rural or not rural, we still try to keep Milton so it stays recognizable as Milton. And these are some of the ways that we have put in place. So questions or more questions?
Kind of just summarize before we get to a bunch of questions. You know, we really think that the short-term success that we have in, in regulating this is through the zoning code and through what comes out of this moratorium with the zoning. If we craft the correct zoning classifications with the correct requirements in them, we can do a lot of the view shed protection that, that needs to happen in a lot of neighborhoods to be built, where they're going to be built in a format that hopefully you all are satisfied and comfortable with. So I think that's really, if you were to say, Chris, what's, what's on the short-term horizon that's going to add to the solution of this? I hate to even call it a problem, because this is a good problem to have as a community. There's a lot of communities that would love to have this thing that we're calling a problem. So, you know, it, it's one of those things, I think, as we come out of this moratorium with some recommendations to you, that's going to be where we need to put our short-term focus, and that's in our ability to regulate, because that's something that we have that nobody else has as a, as a governmental entity. And we'll have these other things at the periphery that we can go to when we need to. And then, once we've got that locked in, if we want to look towards a more logical, long-term preservation through either acquisition or through, you know, purchasing of development rights, or transferring of development rights, or fee simple acquisition, or whatever we want to look at moving forward, acquisition through a trust, there's, you know, assortment of different, of different models we could look at and how we can fund that. But, you know, we're focusing our efforts right now on the here and now, because I think the here and now is important, because we are under a moratorium, and that's the purpose of one. And then we'll certainly bring some recommendations forward to you as we start to receive the deliverable from this playbook, and then look at what, you know, an open space plan might look like for Milton moving forward. So give you kind of a, a sense of where we are today, and that, you know, there's things that are going on. And we'd take, happy to take your questions or any direction you want to give us moving forward.
I just want to say, you know, thank you guys for starting this process and all the work you've done so far and our work in the future. It's good to, it's good to be able to see, as Chris made the statement, you know, we're not lost yet, so to speak. You know, 47% of, of land is what I think most people, you know, no matter where you live in Milton or whatever, you know, attracts people with the rural look, so it's good to know that, you know, there is 47% left and that we do have some, caught at time, I guess.
Yeah, and that's with all the proposed development, yeah, so...
Okay, anybody else? All right?
Okay, thank you.
I need to make an announcement here on this next agenda item, so I can't, I'm tired of not being able to see y'all. It's like I have a, it's like I have a conversation with myself all night. Occasionally I can see somebody come...
We need to talk to you about that.
Need a booster seat.
I do, I do need a booster seat.
Need one of those bar stools, yeah, that brings you up higher.
Okay, couple of things, and this is for you as the council and also for the public's benefit. We are going to leave the building and go on an onsite visit, and we're going to look at a piece of art potentially that will go in the park. That's what's advertised. We've got a little bit of a change, because we didn't have any members of the press join us tonight, and I had hoped we would, because I was going to put one of them on a bus with us, and then we could have all ridden together to go to this location. But since no member of the press showed up, I'm a little bit, and the city attorney's a little bit uncomfortable doing that. So change of plans, you're probably going to like it better. So what we're all going to do from here is individually or collectively, if y'all choose to come back here, we're going to drive to the clubhouse at Triple Crown Neighborhood off of Birmingham Highway that is directly across the street from where we're going. We'll park there, and then we will shuttle you across the street up to the top of the hill, four at a time, three at a time, because then we will technically be at our meeting location to where this blacksmith is. And then you'll be able to get your car. We will adjourn the meeting, and this is for the public's benefit and yours, we will adjourn the meeting at that offsite location, so you all do not have to come back here tonight. So if it is advantageous to you to drive to this location and then just be able to depart from there, that probably is a good thing, especially for those that live up right next to it. That really saves you a little bit of time. So that, that'll be the format for tonight, so we'll all leave here, probably in the next 10, 15 minutes, we'll all end up there, and then we'll have shuttles there to get us up to the top of the hill. I want to hand out a copy of, of a map for you, and I want to hand out a copy of a map for you to put into references to what we're going to look at tonight. This is, and I'll pass them on in just a second. This is a map of what the entrance to the park is forming up to look like, and really essentially what it will look like at this point. If we move forward with some type of a piece of art in this park, it would be right on top of that number 18, right on top of that number 18. That's in the roundabout that's right at the entrance to the park. Initially, a flagpole was contemplated at that, in, in that spot, and we've since located this particular artist who, I think you'll be impressed with what you see tonight, but if we choose to use him, that is where it would go. There's also a couple of renderings in here, I just want you to take a look at after a lot and a lot and a lot of work. We've got some renderings of the main structure that's in the park, the concession stand. It'll be going forward to the designer review board for their feedback. I just don't want you all to be second in the loop as to what that building would look like before it goes to one of the boards and committees. So take a look at it. If you have serious objection to it, I'd like to hear what that is, and, and we'll certainly take those on a case-by-case basis. Little history on this blacksmith before we get out there. We have some folks that were watching an RFP process and just trying to see what was going to happen with a community art project that was happening in the city of Duluth in the middle of their roundabout, which is right adjacent, down the street a little bit from their city hall. And they did a worldwide search for an artist to try to find some type of beautiful piece of artwork. They had responses from Europe, they had responses from the United States, almost 100 respondents, and ultimately, at the end of this RFP process, they chose their artist from Milton, Georgia. And we had to figure out, okay, so if, after a worldwide search, the artist exists in our backyard, it seems a little silly that we not try to find out who this person is, because they need to obviously contribute to the park that's going to be built in their city. You'll find this guy absolutely fascinating when we get out there tonight. He does have his own forge, his own blacksmith operation. He's got big 500-pound hammers and 1,000-pound hammers and these things. I mean, you'll see the piece of art that's going to be in the center of Duluth's roundabout, it's almost 6,000 pounds. They actually had to pour a pad, because the ground wouldn't support it. So you're, you're going to have a good night in seeing this, and it's neat to see that this exists right around the corner, and who would have known? But, you know, there's an opportunity, he's actually built a model tonight, so we're going to do more than see sketches. He's built a model of what he is proposing to build for our park, and you'll get to touch it and feel it and spin it and do all sorts of stuff with it. They don't sketch in this world, you know, because their things are so big, they actually create small versions of them, and that's how they, and that's how they respond to requests for work, is they build it at, you know, a smaller scale, and then if we say, yeah, that's what we want, they'll, he'll build it at a, at a 12-foot scale. So you're in for a treat tonight, this is going to be fun, but I wanted to give you that little piece of background for you and for the public's benefit before we get out there, that that's what we're going to see. So I think we can probably just clear out from here, and we'll see everybody in the parking lot of Triple Crown Neighborhood, Birmingham Highway.
If I could, I just want to emphasize that I know that there's not a whole lot of folks in the gallery, but the public is invited to meet the council at this location at 14250 Birmingham Highway.
two fifty Birmingham Highway and observe this meeting of the council.
If I say sorry four times, I'm going to walk up there.
Best way to get there.
Perfect.